Sorry y'all. Are y'all ready? I'm sorry. Okay, then I'm really sorry. We'll call the meeting to order. And before we start, I need to make our statement. Is the carry good to go?
We're good.
Okay. The meeting will be broadcast at the link that's available on our school's website. Email any comments for agenda items to Ms. Lauren. Her email address is available on the school's website. Give your full name, the agenda item you wish to address, and a telephone number where you may be reached. Comment requests will be addressed before each agenda item votes. And for any questions, start with a roll call, please.
Sure, Ms. Provost.
Here.
Mr. Juves.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Bayham.
Here.
Mr. Gordon. Do you have a call?
Thank you. Okay. Before we move on, we have two things that we'd like to amend the agenda for. And first, it's just to change reports and recognitions. It should say action items. We'll be voting on those. So, would someone make a motion? So, amend that?
I'll make a motion to make the change.
Do we have a second, Ms. Sue? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And then the second one is Mr. Evans requesting that we amend the agenda to add, let's see, west of Sherrington Blood Protection Project to the discussion item. Do we have a motion to do so?
I think we do.
And the second, Ms. Sue? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. And we can go on to the pledge. So, if y'all can stand for the pledge as you move on.
Pledge the ladies. To the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic where each stands, one nation, for God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
And Ms. Adams?
I understand. I'm going to go with the public. Did you say that two addresses? We don't want to make mistakes. This is what you said. You know, because it helps. It needs time to handle. They give you a decision. They're going to make it tonight. Make this move. It's a choice. I can't change this.
Thank you. All right. We have the approval of our official board minutes from the meeting on October 27. And there's one change that was requested. Ms. Lauren?
Do I need to?
Oh, okay. So, that's already done?
Just reflect it in a minute if you have.
Okay. If y'all want to look over that and see if there was any corrections, you guys. I'll give y'all a minute. We weren't here for a long time. I feel like the minutes would go to detail. You know? Stephanie said y'all were here for a long time. I don't think we were. Yeah, it was pretty short. Just let me know whenever y'all done this. If anyone wants to make a motion, go through the minutes as in.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Sue, make a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. All right. We'll go on to the action items. And for our audience, that's the ones that we'll be voting on. So, before it goes to a vote, we'll ask the public for comments, questions, concerns. So, we have the budget versus the actual for the general fund. And that's Ms. Megan.
Yes. For our children, we have a surplus of $116,985. And for the year, it's $597,451. And the only notable expenses will be the year-end salary and benefit of pools. It's the only lower we've spent that we haven't booked yet. Yes.
Do y'all have any questions? For Megan?
I think right here, you said that something wasn't invoiced yet?
No. The only notable expenses would be the year and the pool.
So, everything is expensed up to date? Is there anything else?
Yes.
Could have stood good.
Yeah. Our audience, if y'all have any questions or comments. Oh, y'all can't hear. Y'all need to speak up.
Do you have a paper? So, the surplus for the current, for October is $116,985. And year-to-date is $597,451. And so forth.
All right. If everyone's done going over that and maybe you don't have anything else, we can. Does anyone want a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the change.
And we have a second from Ms. Adams. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And then the second one is Mr. Evans requesting that we amend the agenda to add, let's see, west of Sherrington Blood Protection Project to the discussion item. Do we have a motion to do so?
I think we do.
And the second, Ms. Sue? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. And then the second one is Mr. Evans requesting that we amend the agenda to add, let's see, west of Sherrington Blood Protection Project to the discussion item. Do we have a motion to do so?
I think we do.
And the second, Ms. Sue? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. And we can go on to the pledge. So, if y'all can stand for the pledge as you move on.
Pledge the ladies. To the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic where each stands, one nation, for God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
And Ms. Adams?
I understand. I'm going to go with the public. Did you say that two addresses? We don't want to make mistakes. This is what you said. You know, because it helps. It needs time to handle. They give you a decision. They're going to make it tonight. Make this move. It's a choice. I can't change this.
Thank you. All right. We have the approval of our official board minutes from the meeting on October 27. And there's one change that was requested. Ms. Lauren?
Do I need to?
Oh, okay. So, that's already done?
Just reflect it in a minute if you have.
Okay. If y'all want to look over that and see if there was any corrections, you guys. I'll give y'all a minute. We weren't here for a long time. I feel like the minutes would go to detail. You know? Stephanie said y'all were here for a long time. I don't think we were. Yeah, it was pretty short. Just let me know whenever y'all done this. If anyone wants to make a motion, go through the minutes as in.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Sue, make a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. All right. We'll go on to the action items. And for our audience, that's the ones that we'll be voting on. So, before it goes to a vote, we'll ask the public for comments, questions, concerns. So, we have the budget versus the actual for the general fund. And that's Ms. Megan.
Yes. For our children, we have a surplus of $116,985. And for the year, it's $597,451. And the only notable expenses will be the year-end salary and benefit of pools. It's the only lower we've spent that we haven't booked yet.
Yes.
It's not booked yet.
Right.
Yeah, it's not in the details. We can move on.
Do y'all have any questions?
I think right here, you said that something wasn't invoiced yet?
No. The only notable expenses would be the year and the pool.
So, everything is expensed up to date? Is there anything else?
Yes.
Could have stood good.
Yeah. Our audience, if y'all have any questions or comments.
Oh, y'all can't hear. Y'all need to speak up.
Do you have a paper? So, the surplus for the current, for October is $116,985. And year-to-date is $597,451. And so forth.
All right. If everyone's done going over that and maybe you don't have anything else, we can. Does anyone want a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And we have a second from Ms. Adams. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. And we also have, we'll be voting on the approval of the Glensville Charter School enrollment policy and the lottery procedures for our next school year. And that's Ms. Lauren.
Yeah. So, it says 2526 because that's, we're going to be doing this during this. But it's more of an enrollment. I'm not bothering you here. Okay. So, this is required for charters. And it is in our charter that we do a lottery enrollment. And we do have to turn in, have a, an approved policy each year that we turn in to the State Department. And so, there's no, there's no changes since last year. It's exactly the same. And then they gave us a new form to do our enrollment projection table. So, starting with this year for four years, it's usually five. Like this, this only happened four years. It hasn't changed. It's the same. This is the maximum number that we can accept at any grade level. And then, of course, there's the, in general, your overall number. You can go 10% over that in any given year. But we, we've never gotten up to the 556. So, we're, we don't need to worry about that. Most of our grades right now have over 40s. That's a really good number. Eighth grade, we did consolidate down to one class instead of two. With some enrollment changes there. But overall, we're at like 497 right now with our enrollment. And we will be starting, the intent to return for current students begins in January. And then the open enrollment window opens in February. And then the lottery is held in the last, on the, on the February meeting for any open spots that we have based on current enrollment and the intent to return. So, that's it on the enrollment policy and lottery procedures.
Is 3K not listed on here?
Because 3K is not listed on here. Because 3K is part of the Grand Start Network and the LA4 program. And it's not covered under 3K.
Do y'all have a copy of this? I can give them. There should have been that.
There was one copy.
Here. It's still on board while they look over. Do y'all have any questions or comments?
We do this every year. Yeah.
Yeah. So, then you adopted those. Last year's was online right now. But as soon as this is adopted, this will be online for this year.
Oh, it will be online.
And also, you can see on the third page, this is due based on our charter renewal two years ago. The percent required percentages, or economic disadvantage, is 61.6. And the required percentage for students with disabilities is 11.7.
Where are we at on that?
We are over 10% right now.
On which one? On students with disabilities?
Students with disabilities.
What happens if we don't hit the 11.7?
Well, we did it last year. So, I had to turn in a justification report to the State Department in August to explain what was happening.
Mr. Gordon, do you have a call?
Thank you. Okay, before we move on, we have two things that we'd like to amend the agenda for. And first is just to change reports and recognitions should say action items. We'll be voting on those, so let's not make a motion. So amend that.
I'll make a motion to make the change.
Do we have a second, Ms. Sue? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. And then the second one is Mr. Evans requesting that we amend the agenda to add, let's see, west of Sherrington Blood Protection Project to the discussion item. Do we have a motion to do so? And the second, Ms. Sue? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, and we can go on to the pledge. So if y'all can stand for the pledge as you move. All right, we have the approval of our official board minutes from the meeting on October twenty-seventh. And there's one change that was requested. Ms. Lauren? Do I need to? Oh, okay, so that's already done?
Just reflect it in the minute you have.
If y'all want to look over that and see if there was any corrections, you guys. I'll give y'all a minute. We weren't here for a long time. I feel like the minutes would go deeper. Stephanie said y'all were here for a long time. I don't think we were. Yeah, it was pretty short. Just let me know whenever y'all done this. If anyone wants to make a motion, go approve the minutes as in.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Sue, make a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll go on to the action items. And for our audience, that's the ones that we'll be voting on. So before it goes to a vote, we'll ask the public for comments, questions, concerns. The budget versus the actual for the general fund, and that's Ms. Megan.
Yes. For our children, we have a surplus of one hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And for the year, it's five ninety-seven, four fifty-one. And the only notable expenses will be the year-end salary and benefit of pools. It's the only lower expense that we haven't booked yet.
Do y'all have any questions? For Megan?
I think right here, you said that something wasn't invoiced yet?
No, the only notable expenses would be the year-end accruals.
So everything is expensed up to date, is there anything?
Could have stood good.
Our audience, if y'all have any questions or comments. Oh, y'all can't hear, y'all need to speak up.
Do you have a paper? So the surplus for the current, for October is one hundred and sixteen thousand nine eighty-five, and year-to-date is five ninety-seven, four fifty-one. And so forth.
All right, if everyone's done going over that, and maybe you don't have anything else. Is anyone want a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
And we have a second from Ms. Anna. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, and we also have, we'll be voting on the approval of the Glencore Charter School enrollment policy and the lottery procedures for our next school year on the week. And that's Ms. Lauren.
Yeah, so it says twenty-five, twenty-six because that's, we're gonna be doing this during this. But it's more of the enrollment. Okay, so this is required for charters. And it is in our charter that we do a lottery enrollment. And we do have to turn in, have a, an approved policy each year that we turn in to the State Department. And so there's no, there's no changes since last year. It's exactly the same. And then they gave us a new form to do our enrollment projection table. So starting with this year for four years, it's usually five, but this is only half four years. It hasn't changed, it's the same. This is the maximum number that we can accept at any grade level. And then, of course, there's the, in general, your overall number. You can go ten percent over that in any given year. But we've, we've never gotten up to the five hundred and fifty-six, so we're, we don't need to worry about that. Most of our grades right now have over forty, which is a really good number. Eighth grade, we did consolidate down to one class instead of two. With some enrollment changes there. But overall, we're at like four ninety-seven right now with our enrollment. And we will be starting, the intent to return for current students begins in January. And then the open enrollment window opens in February. And then the lottery is held in the last, on the, on the February meeting. For any open spots that we have based on current enrollment and the intent to return. So that's it on the enrollment policy and lottery procedures.
Is pre-K not listed on here because it's?
Pre-K is not listed on here because pre-K is part of the Grand Start Network and the L.A. Four Program. And it's not covered under pre-K.
Do y'all have a copy of this?
There should have been that.
It's still on board while they look over. Do y'all have any questions or comments, Ms. Lauren?
We do this every year.
Yeah, so then you adopted those. Last year's was online right now, but as soon as this is adopted, this will be online for this year. And also, you can see on the third page, this is based on our charter renewal two years ago. The required percentages, or economic disadvantage is sixty-one point six. And the required percentage for students with disabilities is eleven point seven.
Where are we at on that?
We are over ten percent right now.
On which one? On students with disabilities? What happens if we don't hit the eleven point seven?
Well, we did it last year, so I had to turn in a justification report to the State Department in August to explain why it wasn't where it needed to be. And we potentially would lose points on our yearly evaluations.
Are we hitting any, are we gonna hit them this year, you think?
So it, it count, it, it, it goes by October one count. So October one count, like I said, was over ten percent. And then they'll do another February one count. So I'm not sure, but I mean, we're up two percent since last year. It's really confusing, Mr. Anthony, because the email and the letter that I got that I had to justify said that our required percentage was eight point nine, and we read eight point five. So I had to justify why we weren't at our target. That doesn't match up with this eleven point seven that they told us that we had to have. So I just went with that eight point nine, made my justification, turned it in, and they said, okay. So we'll see.
What about the sixty-one point six?
We're in the seventies.
But it's also, I mean, it's to ensure, so they take the average of the local. It's to make sure theirs is not a ten percent average, and you're at two.
Exactly. I feel like we're pretty close, though. This is not a red flag number, for sure.
What's the worst thing that could happen to us? It's just losing some point.
It won't put us in danger of being shut down or anything like that. They're just gonna, they're gonna tell us that we have to reprove that. And, and make sure it's a priority in enrollment procedures.
Our audience, do y'all have any questions, comments? Are you guys ready then to take it to a vote? I think everybody is good. Do we have a motion to approve our new enrollment policy and lottery procedures? A second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. That's all of our action items then. All right, so we can go on to the discussion items. And that's just a follow-up for the insurance premium schedule for retirees. And is that, is Megan, did you take that, Ms. Lauren? Whoever.
We're both acting.
Okay, acting, okay.
Okay, so after the discussion at the last meeting, Ms. Megan got right on it. I mean, she really has taken the lead on this. But she has, she reached out to O G B, she had conversations with them. She reached out to T R S L, she had conversations with them. And then our auditors came in, our first audit, like when they came in to audit our, to look at our files. And she did mention it to the auditor because the question is, how do you pay the extra between the fifty-eight percent and the seventy-five percent? So O G B says that they would not, that it's not on them, they would not have any part of that. They would take out the fifty-eight percent, and that would be it, right? And then T R S L, they said
They said that we'd have to issue a ten ninety-nine. Well, they didn't tell me, but they said if we issued a ten ninety-nine, which we'd have to do, that would be fine, I'd just have to make a note because it would be an exception when you get the yearly review.
Because she was concerned that if she did, you know, write them a check and it would be a ten ninety-nine, and it would look like they were working, and it would kind of invalidate their retirement. So that kind of was worked out. And then the auditor took a look at the question, and they, you know, looked at it and said, well, you know, we can't on the face of things see any issue, but you need to reach out to your lawyer. And so we did, and I just proposed, I guess, I sent an email from Shannon that explained what she wanted, what she was requesting. And it took them a few days, and they came back and gave an opinion that it would be illegal for us to pay that extra money. So I have before you the formal opinion letter from them that I did receive today. I did request that. This, this letter that I sent out to you guys on Friday listed what they told me on that day, on Friday, but I did request the formal letter. And so that's what you have at the back of your packet. So that's kind of where we are, this is what we found out.
Do you make the add?
And I, I do want to mention that, like, Ms. Megan, like, from the very beginning, she worked she worked as if this was something that we were gonna make happen. Neither one of us expected this opinion to come back this way. That's just where we are.
Do y'all have any questions then? Can y'all just let me know when y'all comment? If our board has any questions, one of the things we have is Ms. Megan or Ms. Lauren? Catch twenty-two. We'll just leave it at that for now. Is Ms. Shannon on the phone, call then? I know y'all were asking.
No, she's there.
And we can still, if we have any questions or anything that comes up later, we can still contact Ms. Shannon or Ms. Lauren, just Megan, anybody.
And we'll consult with the lawyer, whichever one of our questions come up.
So already, we can move on to the next discussion. I'm sorry, the next discussion item. And that's gonna be Ms. Michelle and Mr. Brandon. And they're gonna present us, just an open discussion about considering a four-day school and how much I'll take the folder.
All right, so tonight, we would like to present a proposal for the board's consideration regarding the potential exploration of a four-day school week for the twenty-five, uh, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year. This proposal is not a request to adopt a four-day week at this time, but rather a request to formally study its feasibility to determine whether it would be beneficial option for our students, staff, and families. As many schools across Louisiana and the nation have begun implementing alternative curriculum models, it is important that our school remain proactive in evaluating any practice that may impact academic performance, teacher recruitment and retention, student well-being, and family needs. To do this responsibly, responsibly and transparently, we are requesting board approval to form a four-day school week exploration committee. If approved, this committee will be tasked with conducting a thorough review of academic impact and instructional quality, student attendance, discipline trends, and overall well-being, teacher recruitment, retention, and professional development, family childcare considerations and community impact, transportation logistics, school operations including lunch schedules, custodial services, and supervision, state requirements for instructional maintenance and compliance. The committee's work will focus on gathering data, reviewing research, listening to stakeholder concerns, and ultimately determining whether a four-day model is feasible and appropriate for being used for charter schools. To ensure comprehensive and balanced analysis, the committee would include representatives from school administration, teachers, support staff, parents, and designated work release officers. The diverse representation will allow us to evaluate the potential impact from multiple perspectives. Should the board approve the formation of the committee tonight, through the spin of remainder of November, announcing committee membership, establishing a schedule for monthly meetings from December through March, and developing the study framework identifying key research areas, the committee will prepare a full report of findings and recommendations to bring back to the board in March of twenty twenty-six, with updates leading up to that final decision. At this time, we respectfully urge the board to approve the formation of a four-day school week exploration committee so that we may begin a structured, thoughtful, and transparent review process. This step allows us to gather the necessary information to make an informed decision that prioritizes student, our, and staff support and community needs.
Thank you. Anything y'all want to add or ask?
No, I mean, the thought process behind it honestly is, you know, in order to be able to recruit and be competitive, when we pay this amount surrounding districts, it's hard, like, where do we have to offer to other districts? So I think at this point, if we do move in a direction of that, we should see an uprise in, you know, qualified candidates who are applying for a job.
And retaining, retaining the teachers.
One of the things I kind of like about exploring this is, you know, we've been saying for a long time, we find something that can separate the code from other schools in the area and whatnot. And this would be a great way to do that, you know? Establish ourselves in a four-formular.
Would, would it make the days, would it make your terms longer? Or would it make your days, four days or four, I'm making it about four ten-hour days instead of five eight-hour days?
That's one of the things we're gonna look at. Because I mean, we're already, technically, we already are over, so we have like a good hundred and fifty-six. So where the district usually deals in like four or five, we usually have eight. So I don't know, in consideration of that, you know, we'd have to look at all of that. But we don't want to spend the time and resources if it's not something you're willing to consider.
I looked into it a little bit back when Katie at first got in, Joe was talking about it. And I was astonished to find out that several parishes in the state had been doing it for quite a while and seeing great results with it, so I think it's definitely something.
And that's one of the things I would like to look at, you know, there's test scores, fire, post, business, kind of attendance, things, finances. And of course, you know, we would want to have parent involvement as well, so having a open meetings with parents to get their concerns, hear their kind of thing. But then you also want to look at, you know, if it's Monday through Thursday, or Fridays, you know, doctor's offices close half the day. So even depending on that, so do you want to do Mondays instead, or it's?
One of, one of the things I remember really in, in, I, I have a family relative that, that was impacted by the whole thing in a, in a county parish. They live there. And I think they wanted more with a Monday and something. I never thought about a lot of sporting events and different things after the Fridays. So they wanted doing a, a Monday to give a three-day weekend. And I, I'll just assumed it would have been the Friday, that would have been a day on, but that was a great point right there.
But, you know, to help with attendance, you know, a lot of parents takes kids out of school to take them to the doctor or whatnot. And, you know, if we were to go to a four-day week, like Brandon said, Friday is a lot of doctors off the coast. All the Friday, that has to be enough. And it may be more feasible to do, you know, we're at school Tuesday, Friday, and we're off on Monday.
But it don't, don't hurt to ever explore. That'd be really interesting to see the reports on childcare and some of the different things. Where does it create a hardship or not?
And that's one of the things we're gonna look at is, you know, different models. I mean, some districts have a model where on that day off, you know, students would need intensive mediation, come in on that day. Teachers may come in, that's the day they plan to have meetings, or, you know, there's different models, so it depends just for all of them.
I know, right, one school was actually doing it where they actually had a daycare like thing open that gave the teachers opportunity to come and make more money and everything. That was an additional paying kind of thing, so there's a lot of different things out there.
Don't your funding for your, your lunches and stuff like that, that would impact it too, I'm sure. So there'd be some different fundings that would hit you. I think you just look and see and explore and see which options. Interested to see what the studies say, too.
Okay, so your board approval.
To form a committee, is what y'all were looking for tonight?
That's our favorite term.
Ms. Anthony?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, and?
We have a board number.
Ms. Lauren's here.
I want to quit. All right, Ms. Lauren, you have the admin update, and Megan, you too, if you have anything.
Okay, first of all, I would like to introduce our new school resource officer, Mr. Joe Bassman. We have kept him busy. His two weeks that he's been here. He walks around and interacts with our children, and I'm happy to have him.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so along that same vein, I can report that the people appraisal position has been filled with a school psychologist. I'm super excited about that. Also, we had an opening in seventh, eighth grade social studies that has been filled with a former Lenco teacher. And because there was a vacancy in the special ed position, I consolidated some things. And so that position is now filled with someone who was already here for the whole day spent, and which left a science position open for seventh and eighth grade. And that has also been filled by a former teacher from Lenco. Ms. Minette Tapoya is doing social studies, and Ms. Monique Darnin will be doing science. And our people appraisal is Ms. Candace Baptiste, and she is coming from St. Martin Parish. So at this point, the only opening that I have is sub-bus drivers and a part-time occupational therapist. So also, we've been quite busy. We had homecoming right after our last meeting and chump retreat. It was a lot of fun, it was a great day, chump retreat. Our homecoming parade and pep rally was just great. And then our chump retreat day was just a beautiful day, the weather was perfect. The kids really enjoyed it, and we had so many cars and parents and community members who participated. It was really a wonderful day. And then Ms. Abby has also been very busy in planning and helping us with some new things. We had a kindness week, which we haven't had for a while. And she had great activities for the students during the week. And also a blood drive, we did a blood drive in the name of kindness week, and that was very, very successful. And great for our school to be able to sponsor that. She is also planning, Barn Hill's Wildlife Preserve is coming on December fifth. And it's with their animals, their exotic animals, and we're gonna set them up in the gym. And all of our classes will be able to go in for a presentation. And just super excited about being able to bring those things to us at our schools, so everybody gets to enjoy them. So I'm very thankful for Ms. Abby and all of her efforts this past month. 4H just completed a food drive. I don't know how many hands that we've collected, but it's a lot, a lot. And we also had a, a gym day where we raised money for donation to CASA.
You know, on K T V for the Veterans Day?
Yes, the Veterans Day program was. Yes, the Veterans Day program was, I, I had, I had that listed as the very first thing and I didn't even notice I mentioned it. The Veterans Day program was also another wonderful, beautiful day, the weather cooperated. Um, the kids were very involved in, uh, the, the program, the fifth and sixth grade teachers planned it. Our candidate garden through fourth grade students sang the Pledge of Allegiance with our new music program. And it was just perfect. Um, so, and the teachers are like ready to start planning next year's program after that, they were so excited. Um, so also, our stipends, uh, will be paid out this week. The two thousand dollars from the state and the extra five hundred from us uh, will be, uh, paid out to teachers on Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Um, so happy to be able to provide them with that little extra. Um, and just in time for this. And, uh, other than that, we're just learning and growing and getting ready for Thanksgiving.
I have an... Sorry, you go.
Suggestion next year for, um, if y'all want, uh, probably get someone from the National Guard to come off of Veterans Day next year and bring some equipment and different things.
That would be great.
And I, I don't, I don't know if they're, uh, uh, any commanders anymore, but that, they would probably be tickled to be able to do that.
I want to do it. Definitely can.
Um, anybody else? Okay.
Might even be able to get in and bring a helicopter.
They can land on the old blimp.
We'll let Brandon take a ride in the helicopter.
They have, the other day in the smoking ball, they had somebody parachuting and then I seen the video, it's, it's a friend of mine calling to school.
I know who it is, too.
They had like an airboat motor on the back of it, propelling through the sky.
Alright, Mr. Evans, you want to present the West of Sherrington Blood Protection Program too? Is he ready? We're ready for you, for you whenever you are.
We recently, Blanco actually was recently in a meeting with the levy board, Miller Engineering, Baker Smith Engineers, et cetera, over a plan to create, uh, to plan a, uh, control structures between the Sherrington Canal and the Iberia Parish line. There is a, uh, project made and underway east of the Sherrington Canal, but there is none west. This plan, essentially, they, they're going to use the same, uh, the, the farm, the levees that exist now, the farmer's levees. Only they're gonna, uh, have to, uh, fill in the borrow pit on the inside of the levee, widen the footprint of the levee, so it's an eight-foot levee, and then dig a new borrow pit inside that. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a win-win program, uh, for most of us. I will point out on the second map, uh, the west end of this, uh, project, uh, is a, well, the, the basic concept is they want to, uh, goes along the tree line east of the, uh, Highway eighty-three to Ivanhoe, cross the Highway eighty-three and come up the tree line on the west uh, side of Highway eighty-three to meet with the Iberia Parish levy system. But for reasons of mainly money, they're proposing now to put a temporary levy at the, uh, west end of this system. And if you look on this map, you see a, a, a blue line of about that long, right over here. And what that is, is a temp, is a, uh, a plan to avoid having to go all the way down to Ivanhoe and back up. But if you notice, just south of the, of that line is the blimp site, which is right out there. And the school is, so the school will be outside the levy system as proposed. And the levy system dead ends at the railroad tracks. It does not go to the highway, it does not connect with anything. So there's a, uh, possibly a flaw that storm surges and high water can go around the end of the levy and affect other things. Of course, at that point, the school's probably underwater, so you really wouldn't care. But anyway, so this is just, this is for information. And my suggestion is, if you know somebody, uh, at Miller Engineering or the Levy District or, uh, or anybody, you know, mention your concern that maybe we all, it's like the last time I remodeled a house. We weren't gonna do this room right now, we're gonna wait a year or two, and ten years later, we're still waiting. So I just don't know, you know, when we're gonna get the money to, to do what the plan is originally.
So this goes all the way up to, is it all the way up to the T E S H or...
No, it goes to, the theory is, the east end is gonna be the Sherrington Canal. And the western will be the Iberia Parish line.
Okay, so it's gonna run, uh, east to west?
Yes. But the other problem is, Iberia hadn't told us where the western, east end of their levees gonna be.
Got you.
So that's a...
So this might be the, uh, uh, distribution point?
Yeah, well, there's, uh, this plan is a, uh, a great step forward. Several years ago, the Corps of Engineers was proposing that the south side of Highway ninety be the, uh, levy system, which would, all of us would be underwater or could be underwater. So they, uh, anyway, so this is an information item and you don't have to get your waders out right now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Alright, that's all of our discussion items then. Um, on the announcements, the planning committee meeting will be with Representative Benny St. Law. It's gonna be Thursday, November twentieth, at five o'clock. In the distracted period, so send out emails to all of the main members.
Does he have anyone from, uh?
He's in town. He's in town. That's our only announcement then. Alright, our next meeting date is December fifteenth, right for Christmas. Alright, would anyone like to make a motion to end the meeting? It's nice. It's right, okay. Okay. Do we have a second? Miss Sue, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried and what's...